Well, good evening, everyone. We'll try to get promotions done before the tone sounds again. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council for Monday, August 26, 2024. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi? Ms. Colasetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next item is approval of minutes from the August 19, 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Chandra.
Second.
Seconded by Jaya. Is there any substantial corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes. Additions to the agenda, we would like to add a proclamation to follow the annual Urbana Free Library Report. And we'll move on to presentations and public input. And we have several items to take care of first, and then we'll move on to public input. So the first are two promotions in the Urbana Fire Department. Chief Daye.
Hello. I'd like to say good evening to the members of the council, city faculty, members of the public who are here with us, and on behalf of all the members of the Urbana Fire Department who are here, we'd like to express our gratitude for once again being able to come and jointly share in the success of our members as they undergo an arduous promotional process and then successfully navigate through the promotional ranks in our department. Tonight, we have two members that we're going to bring before you, the first of which is firefighter Calvin Kearns. Calvin is a five-year member of the Urbana Fire Department, but Calvin is also about a 10-year member of the City of Urbana. One of the things that the City of Urbana prides itself in is not only the promotion within the ranks and inside of a department, but allowing employees to explore moving from different departments. Calvin actually started his career at the City of Urbana in the Department of Public Works. With us, Calvin is an advanced EMT. He's a member of our technical rescue team, and he's also the member that helps establish the training to meet the criteria to even remain, keep our status as a technical rescue team. Tonight, Calvin is here with a host of individuals. His parents are here, his father Todd, his mother Christine, his wife Haley, his two sons Callahan and Everett. And tonight Calvin is being promoted to the rank of engineer, from firefighter to engineer, and he will be pinned by his brother Chandler.
We'll do the swearing in first.
First, we're going to do the oath, I'm sorry.
You can read from this and I'll read from this. All right. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Calvin Kearns.
I, Calvin Kearns.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the position of engineer.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the position of engineer.
For the City of Urbana in the County of Champaign, Illinois.
For the City of Urbana in the County of Champaign, Illinois.
And will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
The State of Illinois.
The State of Illinois.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Urbana.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Urbana.
Acting rightfully for the citizens of Urbana, so hereby affirmed.
Acting rightfully for the citizens of Urbana, so hereby affirmed.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Now Calvin will be pinned by his brother Chandler.
The sign.
The next member that we'll bring before you is firefighter Austin Upton. He's way up here. Austin is also a five-year member of the Urbana Fire Department. Austin is a paramedic. He's an instructor in our FTO program, which trains our new recruits. He's one of our members that is highly involved in delivery of training for our entire fire department. And I'm sorry for that. Help me, Mark. Oh, thank you. He's also EMS service officer. Appreciate it. Tonight after Austin does his oath, he's been accompanied by his mother Sean, and his wife Ashley, and his son River.
Thank you.
Repeat after me.
I, Austin Upton.
I, Austin Upton.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the position of engineer.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the position of engineer.
For the City of Urbana in the County of Champaign, Illinois.
For the City of Urbana in the County of Champaign, Illinois.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
The State of Illinois.
The State of Illinois.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Urbana.
And the Charter and the ordinances of the City of Urbana.
Acting rightfully for the citizens of Urbana.
Acting rightfully for the citizens of Urbana.
So hereby affirmed.
So hereby affirmed.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And we'll need you to sign.
And tonight Austin will be pinned by his wife.
Sorry, go ahead.
Amanda. Once again, the Urbana Fire Department thanks you.
Next item on the agenda is administration of the Deputy City Clerk oath. It will be administered by our city clerk.
So this is a new procedure for the city clerk's office, but it is important that citywide we are recognizing our fantastic staff and uplifting them. And today marks the six-month anniversary of Raphael joining the City of Urbana, as well as the city clerk's office. And so we are going to formally minister an oath. So if you would please repeat after me, we're going to share a mic, so. I state your name.
I, Sukyan Cho.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the position of Deputy City Clerk.
Of the position of Deputy City Clerk.
For the City of Urbana.
For the City of Urbana.
And the County of Champaign, Illinois.
And the County of Champaign, Illinois.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
Preserve, protect, and defend. Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
The State of Illinois.
The State of Illinois.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Urbana.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of Urbana.
Acting rightfully for the citizens of Urbana.
Acting rightfully for the citizens of Urbana.
Congratulations. Welcome. Next, next item on the agenda is the annual report of the Urbana Free Library.
Can you hear us? Yes, much better.
Yes.
Thank you very much for your time. I am Celeste Mutos, current executive director of the Urbana Free Library.
I'm Daniel Urban, president of the Board of Trustees for the Urbana Free Library.
And I'm Rachel Fuller, current associate director at the Urbana Free Library.
So pursuant to the Local Library Act, the Board of Trustees of the Urbana Free Library, within 60 days after the close of the fiscal year, is to report to you in writing on the condition of their trust on the last day of the fiscal year. You have received a copy of the report that has been filed with the State of Illinois, and we are here to provide you tonight with some highlights of the past year, fiscal '24. As always, a sincere thanks to the city council and city staff for your support of the library, which turned 150 years old this June. We would not be a public library at all if it were not for the city council taking a chance that this community would embrace a public library, which it clearly has. And again, 150 years of support, and hopefully 150 more years of support. Thank you very much. We have a couple of strategic directions for fiscal '24 we want to highlight. One big thing for us was the library board passed the building program that was passed on May 14, which will guide future possible expansion and renovation of the library, which is very exciting as we think about our future and how best to serve our community. We continue to work on deferred maintenance, which I'm sure you can relate to, including work to replace the aging East air handler. It is anticipated to be replaced this October. It's been about an 18-month process to get parts fabricated for the size and to be put into the roof. Also, we've been planning throughout fiscal '24 to renovate our circulation audiovisual area on the first floor to make that a more pleasant experience for patrons and staff, and to be able to use our space differently. Working with architects, the timeline to get that work started is going to be August of 2025. Working in the summer puts us in competition with school districts, and we don't have school district money. So we'll be working on designs through the spring, it'll go out to bid, and then start in August of 2025. We have been planning for a smaller refresh of some of the spaces that will happen sooner than next year.
A few comments about programs of note. The ARPA grant funding through the City of Urbana allowed us to hire a bilingual program specialist to better serve our community. She developed or assisted with developing 37 events in fiscal year '24, 24 programs with in excess of 2,733 attendees, and 13 outreach events with 1,693 attendees. One particular piece of feedback we received was that, quote, "Providing activities and programs in Spanish makes my family feel part of a community." Gracias. Two popular programs were sensory stations, Estaciones Sensoriales, was a bilingual drop-in program with nine different stations where children could participate in various sensory activities. The focus on sensory experiences made the program more accessible to neurodivergent community members. The program had 23 attendees with children's ages ranging from toddlers to tweens. Another program, Stuffed Animal Sleepover, Pijamada de Paluches, invited children to bring their stuffed best friend to a bilingual sleepover themed storytime. It was so popular with families, we are considering another one this fall. Other important popular initiatives. This year, the library and the University of Illinois unveiled the world's first publicly available quantum network at a kickoff event attended by over 200 community members. This included activities for kids, hands-on stations that explain the science and technology behind the quantum network, and a talk and demonstration that replicated the quantum experiment that won the 2022 Nobel Prize in Physics. IT manager Leon Wilson was the first member of the public to use the equipment in the demonstration to prove entanglement. The demo unit was installed at the library to allow community members to interact with the network in an ongoing manner. Another popular event, the 16th Fairy Tale Ball was, had this year. Always a popular community event, it had the highest attendance ever of over 1,800 people.
Some other important community initiatives. The library hosted its 150th anniversary celebration on June 15, and over 600 people attended and participated in many activities throughout the building. During that party, we asked for people's memories, and a patron wrote this on a blue Post-it note, "I met my best friend here at Storytime." Programming for the 150th anniversary is generously sponsored by the Urbana Free Library Foundation. We'll hold programs for a full year to celebrate the anniversary through June of 2025. Please enjoy historical talks, crafts for all ages, a scavenger hunt, and more. Check out our calendar for upcoming events. We are also sponsoring a reading challenge and a super user challenge to encourage use of the library, where you can earn excellent prizes such as a tote bag, lapel pin, and super user patch. Please visit our website for more details. In addition to the library board, there are two groups of volunteers who support the library. They each have their own boards and their own missions to fulfill in support of the library. Both the Friends and Foundation are separate, independent, 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations. Please consider asking your constituents to consider volunteering for either of these wonderful groups. The Friends of the Urbana Free Library host between two and three book sales a year, and Friends materials are sold at the welcome desk every day. Proceeds from the sales provide books for the collection, prize books for summer and winter reading, and prize books for the 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten Initiative. The Urbana Free Library Foundation accepts donations of all sizes and supports ongoing programs, such as the UFL Live Concert Series, as well as larger projects. A complete renovation of the library gardens, now to be named the England Gardens after our generous donors to the foundation, will occur, and that begins next week.
I know you like to take a look at the what is checked out today slide. So yesterday, just under 29,000 items were checked out to our community members with a price of $613,000, $613.71. Of those items, almost 2,800 items are e-content, and we don't have a price on those, given the way that the licensing goes. So the dollar amount checked out to our community member, the value that they're receiving is higher than that as well. Circulation of items is only one indicator of use of the library, as we just talked about, lots of people are attending programs and having meaningful experiences at the library. And they all show how involved people are using the space in the library and being together in the community. And then also, we have virtual programming as well, so that we can be more flexible with people and their circumstances. So I mentioned that I would be executive director for another moment, and Rachel has agreed, and the library board has appointed her, is interim executive director, and I'm so excited for her.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your support.
You've been great to work with, and I appreciate it.
We're all going to need a sleepover with our stuffed animals, Celeste, before you leave. Does anyone have any questions for Celeste? Chandra.
Not so much a question, but a thank you. In the time I've been living here in Urbana, I can really see the growth and appreciation the community has had for the library, and I think it's because you've been at the helm. And I look forward to, you know, Rachel leading, continuing to lead the library, and we'll miss you, Celeste. Thank you.
Thank you. James.
Yeah, I have to say something as well, because I want to echo what Chandra has said, but it's more than that. You've led the library to a great place, and we appreciate that, but you've also been a strong member of this community in the schools, in Rotary, in every way you came in and became a part of it, and we'll miss you for that, too. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we will all have an opportunity to say thank you, and hugs, and bring our stuffies, too. On, I think the farewell party is September?
September the 12th. 12th. From 12 to 2.
At the library. So please mark your calendars. And we do have a proclamation. So I would love for Celeste and all of you to join me. This is, we're all in this together.
You're all in this together.
This is a proclamation by the mayor of the City of Urbana, Illinois. Whereas libraries play a crucial role in the education and development of children. And whereas libraries provide a learning environment that fosters joyful exploration, encouraging students to research subjects that they are genuinely curious about. And whereas signing up for a library card is the first step on the path towards academic achievement and lifelong learning. And whereas a library card gives students the tools that foster success in the classroom and beyond. And whereas a library card empowers all people to pursue their dreams and explore new passions and interests, and find their voice. And whereas library staff create welcoming and inclusive spaces for people of all backgrounds to learn together and engage with one another. And whereas libraries are constantly transforming to deliver new services that connect closely with community needs. Now therefore I, Diane Wolf-Marlin, mayor of the City of Urbana, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the month of September 24, 2024, as library card signup month in the City of Urbana, Illinois, and encourage everyone to sign up for their own library card today.
And last, under presentations, we have a report on the Strides Shelter from City
There we go. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hello. Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Jasmine Hernandez. I am the deputy supervisor at City of Champaign Township, and the City of Champaign Township does operate the one and only low-barrier shelter found in Champaign County. And so today I'm going to focus on, on talking about Strides and our service provisions available at Strides. So Strides is located at 70 East Washington Street in Champaign. Our phone number to our front desk is listed there, 217-403-6150. So like I said, Strides is a low-barrier emergency shelter. Our bed capacity is 64, and so what this breaks down to is 50 male beds and 14 female beds. We do have separate sleeping areas for male and female identifying guests. We are open 24/7, 365 days a year. We are low barrier, which means that there are no eligibility requirements in order to receive services at Strides. Folks staying at Strides do have access to food, showers, laundry, case management, and onsite services from select county partners like healthcare consumer, Champaign County Healthcare Consumers, Champaign-Urbana Public Health District. We have AA that comes in weekly, and other partners like that. The intake process for the emergency shelter is that a guest completes an intake in order to be added to the waitlist. Intakes are available every day between 8:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. Bed claim occurs between 7:00 and 10:00 p.m. And after 10:00 p.m., any beds that are unclaimed by our permanent bedholders, those are the beds that are opened up to the waitlist, and we go down each individual on the waitlist in order for them to be able to claim a bed. Folks that have been assigned a permanent bed with Strides are assigned a case manager within 15 days of being there. And then finally, guests are permitted 130-gallon container for storage of their personal belongings, which is stored in a locked, locked room. So a little bit about who we serve. We did go ahead and pull some data, so looking at January 1st to June 30 of this year, we served 258 unique individuals with shelter services. I did italicize shelter services because that means that they were a bedholder, and so the folks that I'm talking about are the folks that were actively bedholders at Strides. And so out of those 258 individuals, 172 were male identifying, 75 were female, 2 transgender, 1 non-binary, 1 multiple gender, and 7 unknown or didn't want to share. In terms of race, we had 108 identify as black or African-American, 105 as white, 18 as multiracial, 2 as Asian or Asian-American, 3 as indigenous or American Indian, 2 as Middle Eastern, 13 as another race, and 7, again, decided to decline to answer or it is unknown. In addition to that, 13 individuals did identify as Latino or Hispanic. And then breaking down the 258 individuals down by age, 144 individuals were between the ages of 18 and 45, 80 individuals were between the ages of 46 and 62, 24 were 63 or older, and 10, again, we were not, we were not sure. We also serve veterans, so out of those 258 individuals, 17, or 7% of those served, were veterans. And then this next chart, barriers or challenges, it's the one data point that is duplicated. So this is duplicated amongst those 258 individuals. 43 individuals identified a physical disability, 102 identified a mental health disorder, 48 a drug use disorder, 16 developmental disability, 83 a chronic health, chronic health condition, 1 was blind or visually impaired, and 39 identified having alcohol use disorder. In addition to the shelter services that Strides offers, we do operate a drop-in day center, and that is available to any community member that resides in Champaign County. That serves as a warming and cooling center during inclement weather. Folks also have access to free laundry and shower facilities, and everything is provided to them, so shampoo, conditioner, laundry detergent. They also have access to a notary. And then guests wanting to come into the day center, they may enter through the Market Street entrance from 8 to 7:00 p.m. We did roll back those hours a little bit, so it is 8 to 5:00 p.m. that the day center is open. And then something that is exciting that we were able to launch this year is a rapid rehousing program. We run two different tiers of that rapid rehousing program, but it does provide housing navigation and case management throughout the duration of that program, which follows placement into their housing. And then we do offer financial assistance in the forms of a deposit, tenant-based rental assistance, and utility assistance. I did want to take a moment to talk about the proposed tax levy increase we have on the ballot for this November. So in 2023, a property valued at $100,000 paid an annual rate of $13.90. So they paid $13.90 towards the township, and that produced $933,000 in revenue for the township. The proposed rate is that a home valued at $100,000 would pay an annual amount of $73.87 towards the township, and this would result in $4 million in revenue to the township. About 3.4 of that million dollars would be allocated towards the operation of Strides, and this would mean that we would run permanent operations of Strides. So this will allow us to increase the staffing numbers for direct service employees. We would be able to run permanent We would be able to run permanent rapid rehousing and street outreach programs. We would have a computer lab for guests with IT support. We would increase funds for food, transportation, hygiene, and other supplies that guests have access to. And we would provide a housewarming stipend for the folks that we do assist in move-out. There are funds that are going directly to the township in addition to Strides, and that will be $200,000 allocated towards the rental assistance. That will be an additional $75,000 allocated to general assistance to help us make up the difference and bring our monthly grant assistance up from 340 to 425. And then, that also allocates about $85,000 to the assessor side of services. And following this presentation and for future reference, anybody that wants to get ahold of Strides for donations towards their community events may reach out to our community or Director of Community Relations, Charlene Murray. Anybody interested in volunteering can reach out to Carlos RNC, our Director of Programming. And anybody with feedback or interested in internships may reach out to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Jasmine. Are there any questions? Grace.
Thank you for the presentation and the work that you're doing in Champaign there. Can I just clarify? You're talking about the proposed tax levy for the Champaign Township, right?
Yes, City of Champaign Township.
Oh, yeah, because there's also a Champaign one, right?
There is a Champaign Township. That is not us.
Okay, but yeah, just at first, I was wondering if you're talking about, like, yeah, City of Champaign, Cunningham Township, but you're talking about Champaign Township, so.
City of Champaign Township, yes.
Okay, but not City of Champaign. Cool. Thank you.
Any other questions? Jaya.
Is there, and I understand it might change a lot, on average, how long is the waiting list for beds?
So, it's hard to put a timeframe on it. Yesterday, there were 28 active individuals looking for shelter services, and that is about the average rate of individuals on our waitlist is around 30.
Thank you. Welcome back to Urbana. Shandra.
Will the increase in the levy allow for an increase in the number of beds or just what you had listed there?
So, the beds available at Stride Shelter, that is the maximum of beds we can have. That is in correlation to fire code as well. But that rapid rehousing, that would be a program that we would be able to stabilize, and that at minimum would recreate 16 permanent units, or with the proposed budget, 16 permanent units in the community each year to fund.
Thank you.
Mary Alice, did you have any questions?
No, actually, all my questions have already been answered. Thank you very much.
Sure. Chris, could you take the chair?
I'll take the chair and recognize Diane Marlin.
Just had one question. The 3.4 million, is that your total estimated operating budget now, or will you be seeking funds from neighboring communities like you have in the past? Or is that what you think is the total cost?
So, the 3.4 is what we're estimated to spend, to be the operational cost and solidify programming, and so, that would be the base of operations moving forward. Currently, we're running off of a, we have a $2.6 million ARPA grant through the city, and that is how we're affording most of our staffing costs. Our staffing costs are ranging, it's about $2 million right now. And so, we are making up the difference currently in grants.
Including, City of Urbana allocated $750,000 as well.
Yes, yes, thank you. So, yeah, the City of Urbana allocated $750,000 of the Urbana ARPA that was available, and that has been spent down as of January of this year.
Okay, thank you. I'll take the chair back.
I relinquish the chair back to the mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions? Grace.
Sorry, I thought of another one. Will this require a vote for approval from City of Champaign Township voters?
Yes, so, this has passed, the referendum did pass our town board, and so, that is, means that it is approved to be placed on the ballot for November 5th, and so, on November 5th, it'll be a yes or no vote for this proposed tax levy.
Thank you. Jaya.
Just to make sure we can kind of help inform members across the street, what's the potential consequences if the levy is not passed?
We don't have a shelter, a low-barrier shelter, for that fact. That, or we have some very serious conversations with the City of Champaign, which we're prepared to do, absolutely. But it really comes down to we either have a low-barrier shelter in Champaign County or we don't, and given the point-in-time count numbers this year, it is a drastic need. So, the point-in-time count this year resulted in 42 individuals being found as unsheltered, so not a part of an existing shelter, which means that there has been an increase in homelessness in Champaign County, and our beds at Strides, there, it's not enough, but that's 64 individuals off of the street every single night.
Thank you. I think it's important for people to understand the magnitude, not only on housed folks, but all the people in your office who are doing that good work, right? And what that would mean for other nonprofits that are already struggling to find housing for the remaining people who are unhoused. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if anyone's wondering, the slide presentation was in the council packet this week, so it's available online. Okay, we'll move on to public input. Does anyone wish to address the Urbana City Council? If you do, please step up to the microphone and state your name for the record. Oh, that microphone.
Phil Fassella, 1003 Eastern Avenue over in Urbana Township. I was asked to come in this evening to speak with you all about the Township referendum for Strides over in Champaign. As many of you know, I'm a commercial real estate broker in Champaign, but I also own roughly a dozen houses, three commercial buildings, and some vacant parcels just on the east side of the railroad tracks across from Strides. I'm also the court-appointed receiver and caretaker for vacant properties in the neighborhood. Ever since I was in my early 20s over a decade ago, I've been doing all that I can to fix these blocks up and get vacant homes occupied with families and bring some life back into what is kind of the downtrodden east side of downtown Champaign. At one time, I was very optimistic about the future. Downtown was thriving and growing. Midtown was growing strong. People loved being able to walk to downtown restaurants or evening leisure. And, you know, there's beautification projects scheduled for some of the vacant lots in the area owned by the city. But unfortunately, over the past four or five years, momentum has slowed drastically. Downtown restaurants are closing, and people are uncomfortable being in our neighborhood or downtown at all. You could blame inflation or the pandemic, but competing spaces in town, like Carl at the Fields, situated entirely on private property, are thriving and growing, and people are flocking to them while downtown languishes. And the issue at hand, I think quite obviously, is lawlessness and antisocial behavior. You only need to drive by the Strides facility on Washington Street to appreciate the magnitude of the problem, and I encourage all of you to do so as you think about these issues. I also encourage you to reach out to the police and paramedics who serve the facility. Personally, I can't really fathom how an individual who's trying to recover and get a night's sleep can possibly get rest with four or five emergency service calls, sometimes six or more during a shift. And often, you know, I was talking with a paramedic at our fire station before I came out here, and he said, you know, the number of times I'm handed a crack pipe when somebody has chest pain, I mean, people are in the building with drug paraphernalia, intoxicated, having overdoses. It's a difficult situation. I think you could talk to Andy next door at Andy's Towing, who generously donated the land that the Times Center was built on in the early 90s and is now trying to run his business next door. People who work for the cities and for Carl, they can't talk about this stuff openly, but talk with them about the problem and what they're experiencing with this. Our neighbors, employees and tenants, on a daily basis are cleaning up litter, human feces, bottles, and needles. Families in our homes experience daily solicitations for prostitution, constant panhandling, while individuals openly consume alcohol in public, deal, and use drugs. We have almost weekly break-ins this time of year when people are between leases, from people just breaking into a place for a place to shoot up or sleep. A few weeks ago, I had to call the police after a teenage girl living in one of our homes reported a grown man passed out naked on the vacant lot next door at 10:00 in the morning. Last December, a garage between our buildings at 112 East Hill and 109 East Washington was intentionally lit on fire by an unhoused individual, causing damage to five neighboring buildings and rendering one of our homes uninhabitable for over a year, completely burning the garage to the ground. A community service officer that I spoke with a few weeks ago about some recovered bicycles that we found that were stolen from campus on one of our properties gave me the following anecdote about his work. A young unhoused man had been cited for stealing packages 37 times from doorsteps to the tune of over $26,000 in stolen property. Of course, those were just the ones he was caught on. Finally, he was sentenced to three years in prison, but it took that long. And the issue is that people will not tolerate these impacts to their quality of life. They will find other places to live, find other places to run their businesses, and to relax on an evening off. Our neighborhoods are going to experience further decay and vacancy, and the issue is no-barrier housing. I'm not just a greedy landlord. If you know me, you know I'm as involved in this community as I can be. I'm a volunteer firefighter. I take care of my employees and their families like my own, and I have a lot of struggling people in my life whom I love dearly. As those of us who've cared for addicts learn, enabling an addict brings chaos into your life and does a disservice to the addict. Many a times, I've spent hours begging and pleading with a friend to just check himself into the hospital and sober up. The folks at Carl's Emergency Room know me well. Indeed, I was there for several hours this afternoon with a tenant who was in crisis. The reality is, you can't get people to get help by begging.
Thank you. You can submit the rest in writing if you'd like. Does anyone else wish to address the Urbana City Council? Chris, I believe you have some to read into the record.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Hello, City Council members. I would like to ask City Council questions about the recent incident with the near abduction of the 11-year-old girl in Urbana. However, I do not wish to give my name lest the Police Department attack me on Facebook. I hope anonymous comments are allowed. My questions are about the front desk at the Police Department. They are as follows. Have front desk personnel denied services before? What is the training of the front desk personnel? Who oversees them? How are the calls recorded and documented? Is there a written policy for how calls coming to the front service desk are to be handled? Are the citizens who call in to report a crime having their phone numbers and names documented? Do the staff answering the phones at the front desk have the discretion to decide whether the Urbana Police Department will do nothing? I hope there will be an investigation, and the City Council will insist these questions be answered. Thank you for taking my comments. I have another one here. Please enter my input into the record. I do not wish to give my name, but I am a resident of Urbana. I do not want to be harassed by the police, is why I want to remain unknown. What I would like Council to know is I am furious with how the case of the girl walking home from school was handled and sick of cops just being able to issue an apology. The entire community was let down by lackadaisical police work. Rather than looking into the case, the police would rather double down and shame the victim's family for the Police Department's lack of ability. Actions speak louder than words, and the actions of the Urbana Police Department have spoken volumes. They definitely failed that little girl and her family. An apology won't do. They need to be held accountable. We put them in that position to protect and serve, not to distrust or fail like they did. Why did police lie to this mother and only chose to take action after they first chose to bully and blame the victims? They clearly messed up here. The police need to do better. When it was game time, they failed to act. We should all remember that this could have been our child, and it is us they let down. In my opinion, as a parent, they did let us all down. They allowed a predator to continue soliciting children in the area for two more weeks when they could have stopped them that day. I hope an investigation will happen because the truth needs to come out. Are we investigating the failure? When and when will the community be notified of actions taken? Any officer involved should be disciplined. Honestly, Chief Boone should step down, in my opinion. He is obviously not running his crew properly, or this wouldn't have been blown off for two weeks. Seems he and his staff don't take protecting the community a priority. It is unacceptable to not take our kids seriously. Signed, a very scared and angry Urbana parent. Another public input. I want to say something about the outrageous way a family was treated by our Police Department for the record. I no longer trust the police and do not want retribution for what I want to say. Because of that, I do not want to give my name. The officer who made that Facebook post should be fired. Not only did they lie about the situation, they made extremely disrespectful comments towards the victim's family directly. This is disgusting and part of why so many people have no trust for the police. Imagine being terrified that your child was nearly abducted, and then you get publicly attacked. This was a crazy Facebook post by a Police Department. We are human, I know. We make mistakes, but this felt like a personal vendetta by an officer who felt they had a point to prove, and in the end, they were wrong. This was unprofessional and lacked integrity. An explanation is needed. I remember when police officers worked for the public and they had morals and higher standards than criminals, but I guess when you're trained to lie to get what you want, it's all good. It's been proven there was, in fact, a call. No one was ever dispatched. Anyone else think that they put more effort into the Facebook post than they did following up on actual problems? There is no reason to protect the criminal officer that had access to the UPD Facebook account. They at least knowingly slandered Laura, and at worst, what they typed borders onto witness tampering, because who would come forward after that Facebook post? I know I don't want whoever posted that showing up the next time. I need an officer of the law. Chief Boone must resign, and all the officers involved should be reprimanded, especially the one who tried to victim blame with that ridiculous Facebook post. At this point, I have zero confidence. Too many times in my own life, I have felt personally let down and just the general bad apples constantly letting others down. I'm just sick of it. I have another one. No, this is the same one. I have, one more. Feel free to share the questions and ideas below, but please do not attribute them to me. It's not the messenger that is important, it's the message. I don't want to risk pushing for transparency to the point that someone from the city starts a retaliation campaign against me. With that disclaimer out of the way, how long have people answering calls for the UPD been telling victims, reporting a crime, that there's nothing they can do? How often are patrol officers telling people the same thing? Why was there no oversight to determine that the officer answering the calls made a mistake? Why was there no oversight of the officer making the UPD social media posts? If it wasn't for the inflammatory Facebook post and a third attempt to get an investigation, they still wouldn't have investigated this crime. they still wouldn't have investigated this crime. Were any of the officers involved in this incident in violation of public police policy? If so, what disciplinary actions will be taken? What kind of an officer tells someone reporting an attempted child abduction, "There's nothing we can do"? What kind of officer calls a whistleblower out by name, claims they are a liar, and publicly accuses them of police bashing? If they thought this was appropriate and that this behavior is consistent with their oath to protect and serve, what other things are they doing that the public is unaware of? These are perhaps the most important questions. There's no evidence that this is an isolated incident. For all we know, this is something that happens regularly. This is also solid evidence that UPD doesn't need AL... Automated License Plate Reader cameras. They simply need to investigate all the crimes reported to them. When they are willing to investigate crimes, they can solve them. We don't want to make this problem of, quote, "We will only investigate if we have a license plate number," end quote. Problem even worse than it apparently already is by paying for police to watch us 24/7. And that's all I have. Thank you for your patience.
Are there any other communications to read tonight? Okay, we'll move on to Council input and communications. Grace.
Thank you. Think along that same thought process of some of the public input we were just hearing about the attempted abduction and how that was handled poorly by UPD in a few areas. Just want to say that I appreciate the apology from the Chief of Police last week. I think that's a good start. And then it needs to be followed up with actions that would be disciplinary actions for the individuals involved, additional training, especially for front desk intake, and then some systemic policy changes, again, for that front desk intake and Facebook posting kinds of policies. So again, I think those three actions need to be taken of discipline, training, and policy changes. And I do expect an update on these actions to the Council and to the public, understanding that some personnel matters may not be completely public, but I think that whatever we can do publicly and whatever we need to do in closed session, it's important to make sure that the Council and the public are aware of whatever actions are taken here. And I will assume any silence on that, that there have been no actions taken. So I do expect kind of a public acknowledgement of what's happening. And then just a community resource here for people to be aware of. The Races has a 24/7 hotline, and they have support for sexual violence and stalking. If anyone needs additional resources, someone to reach out to, that phone number is 217-384-4444. Thank you.
Jay.
I'm going to sound like a bit of a broken record after the public comment and what Grace just shared. I sent a series of questions. Mayor Marlin's been kind enough to answer what information she had last week, and just to kind of reiterate that as things progress, I do expect that things are still progressing in terms of investigating what happened, that the Council will be kept aware of what that response is. And again, recognizing that because of employees' rights, there may be pieces that cannot be shared publicly, but there is certainly an expectation, I think, for myself, I think from a lot of Council and from a lot of community members, that this is taken very, very seriously, that we're fortunate that we didn't lose a young person in our community, and that nothing could be more important than making sure that something like this never happens again.
Any other Council comments? Mary Alice, did you have anything to say?
Not tonight, thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to reports of the Committee of the Whole.
On behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I have four items on the consent agenda to recommend for approval. The first is Resolution Number 2024-08-056R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Subprecipient Agreement regarding the use of home funds. On behalf of the City of Champaign, Illinois, Bristol Place Seniors FY 2024-2025. Resolution Number 2024-08-057R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Rental Housing Developer Agreement, Bristol Place Seniors, LP FY 2024-2025. Ordinance Number 2024-08-029, an ordinance amending Schedule O-1 of Section 23-201 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code designating local restrictions upon vehicles using certain highways, Washington Street over Sunny Estates ditch. And finally, Resolution Number 2024-08-059R, a resolution approving amendment to the Public Safety Records Management, PSRMS, Intergovernmental Agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Jay, a second by Shandra. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
Yes.
Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti.
Yes.
Ms. Bishop.
Yes.
Ms. Wilken.
Yes.
Mr. Quizenberry.
Yes.
That motion passes. There are no items on the regular agenda. There are no reports of special committees, reports of officers. I do have two things. First of all, yes, the city and the Urbana Police Department takes very seriously the circumstances surrounding the attempted abduction last week. Chief Boone advised me today that the investigation will be completed by the end of this week, and we will have information to share with City Council next Tuesday, which is the next Council meeting. Secondly, I wanted to let people know that the first two meetings of the Alternative Response Task Force have been scheduled. They will be in person here in Council chambers. They will be held on September 17th and October 14th, and that is under the guidance of consultants from Barry Dunn. They will be livestreamed and recorded as requested by Council. They are both during the day. The first meeting on the 17th is 9:00 to 12:00, and the second meeting will be 9:00 to 1:00 PM. And we'll provide that reminders as we get closer to the date. Okay. Yeah.
Did we finalize what Council members will be a part of?
Yes. Mary Alice Wu will represent the Urbana City Council. Yeah, I checked with everyone. Okay, the next item of discussion is local motor fuel tax market rate adjustment. Tim Cowan, Public Works Director.
Okay, so we're here tonight to talk about the local motor fuel tax market rate adjustment. Just a little brief overview of what we're going to talk about in this initial presentation is a comparative analysis, a need for the rate adjustment, the proposed rate adjustment, and then schedule. So looking at the comparative analysis, we looked at a lot of our benchmarking communities that are here locally within our region. The two, a few different things that we compared were what do they have local motor fuel taxes? What are their rates? What is their overall network condition of their roadways? And then just historically, when did they start collecting this and when was it last adjusted? Some general takeaways from this is that Champaign County municipalities are generally on the low end for what our rates are. Champaign's 4 cents, us in Savoy about 5 cents, Decatur's 5 cents, and then on the top end is Danville at 10.3 cents. As you can see really from overall network condition rating, Urbana as a network has worse roads. We have a 54 basis based on projections from the 2019 scans of our roadways projected forward. We have had our roads rescan this year to kind of see where we're actually at versus projections, but we've kind of dipped into, from a pavement condition index, into the poor category as a network. Most of our regional benchmarking communities are kind of hovering right above us in the fair conditions still. A few things to point out. Danville, Decatur, and Savoy all have a diesel component where they're charging taxes on diesel consumption as well. The rest are just gasoline. And then just a little note there, Bloomington and Savoy use a different pavement condition index rating scale of PESER ratings that we've kind of generally assumed to be PCI. That's not exact, but that's an estimate. This is just going over the takeaways that I just kind of discussed there. One of the big things in talking to all of these other stakeholders and other communities is that all of their networks are in a constant state of decline. And one of the primary notable things that they mentioned is insufficient funding for their roadway network. So just because we're low and declining, everybody else is too, based on the funding situations that are out there. Many are interested in looking at alternative funding sources, you know, increasing their own rates, things of that nature. They just are not doing it currently. Another comparison to look at is really what the state has done with their motor fuel tax in the same timeline since we've had our local motor fuel tax. The state was static for decades at that 19 cents on the gasoline, which is what I would use for our comparison, until 2019, when they doubled. The big driving force at the time that the state doubled both their gasoline and their diesel fuel taxes was to address significant transportation funding shortfalls. The other thing they did in recent years is they've now indexed their rate to the Consumer Price Index to track with inflation, to stay relevant, and attempt to keep up with construction Dipping into more on the need for the rate adjustment, this is just an excerpt from the American Society of Civil Engineers. They do an annual report card federally in Illinois-based. The Illinois Report Card for Roads is a D+. That's not that surprising to most of us in the industry. A lot of other municipalities have the same challenges, and, you know, they note discussions were about the rebuild Illinois funds that we got over the past few years being a nice injection, and D+ is actually an increase, but it's potentially short-lived because that funding is going away, and then they expect more of a decline over fuel tax revenues due to EV adoption over the next decade. Just looking at our state motor fuel tax funds with that impact from the rebuild Illinois funds, that was kind of a special injection. You can see we had this nice spike over the last five years. You know, simultaneously, we had the census in 2020 that started to negatively impact. You'll see some like the blue bars start to shrink in the past couple of years. They introduced a transportation renewal fund, which is really where they went from that 19 cents to 38 cents, the state funding did. That's that kind of light green bar. The dark green bar is really intergovernmental revenue from grants or project cost sharing with partners, which is, you know, not something we should expect to always have, so... But if you look at it, you can see a drastic spike over the last five years from those rebuild Illinois funds that are now officially gone. The rebuild Illinois gone away with the census reduction, approximately it's about a 25% decrease over what we've seen on our average funding over the last five years from the state. You know, we hope that the special census in October can help combat some of that, but that's unknown at this time. You know, another big one, I feel like I talked to you guys about this a lot unfortunately, but just the construction costs are just unprecedented in the past few years. This is just looking at 2015 to present, and it's nearly doubled in that same time. So effectively, with the same money, we're buying about 50% of what we could in 2015 for those dollars. Just looking at our network, a little bit more drilled down here, as stated, in 2023, we've estimated our network as a whole to be about a 54. And with the known funding we currently have in place between our local motor fuel tax and our state motor fuel tax, it's projected that over the next decade, we'll continue to decline by about a half point to a point per year without additional injections of funding to remediate some of that. So looking at the proposed rate adjustment, staff recommendation is to really just look at a market rate adjustment and not trying to close the entire gap, because we don't think it's realistic for the local motor fuel tax to put up all of the money for our roads. State motor fuel tax is a key component, local motor fuel tax, grants, CR&amp;I funds within the CIP, you know, for high priority projects. But we're recommending a market rate adjustment because our network is in a constant state of decline, and we'd like to diminish the level of decline. You know, the declining state motor fuel tax funds kind of make it time-sensitive to make a simple and pragmatic solution, something that maybe makes sense rather than trying to drill down and get it just right. The local motor fuel tax, it's an existing revenue stream, so it's simple for us to adjust. And when we looked at kind of projections of what would it take to flatline our network so that we quit losing condition year over year, it was approximately 5.5 million over the next 10 years that we'd have to inject year over year, and we didn't think that that was realistic to ask the local motor fuel tax to make up the entirety of that gap. So this does align with the 2024-2025 Mayor and Council strategic goals, and we do know that alternative revenue streams will demand consideration in the future with the anticipated electric vehicle adoption over the next decade, but this is a funding source that's available to us today. When we looked at what we should consider for a market rate adjustment, kind of the top end or the low end and then the top end was looking, we're currently at 5 cents per gallon for our local motor fuel tax. We really just considered a 10 cents per gallon for a couple of reasons. One, due to the fact that the construction costs have nearly doubled, so doubling our rate, doubling our income in theory, you know, will keep us up to at least doing the amount of work that we were doing in 2015. The most recent CIP also assumed this increase beginning January 1st, 2025, so if we don't do anything, the future years of the Capital Improvement Plan will be reduced. The maximum adjustment we considered with a market rate adjustment was 12 cents per gallon, which is where we've kind of estimated our highest nearby benchmarking community to be, which is Danville. They've got, in 2024, they're 10.3 cents per gallon for gas, and they've also got a 7.5 cents per gas or for diesel component that in 2025, they also have an inflation factor that they will increase in 2025, and we're projecting that to be around 12 cents per gallon. The other consideration that we incorporated in our alternatives was looking at introducing inflation factor for this. State motor fuel tax has recently adopted and accepted the CPIU, the Consumer Price Index, adjustment for theirs, and that's what we've used at least in our analysis currently. There's potentially other models, if you wanted to look at other models for that. So looking at the alternatives, option one, if we go from 5 cents to 10 cents with no inflation factor, will produce about $640,000 per year. Let me go back here. Some of the assumptions on the right side here, these estimates are based on an average over the next 10 years, presuming that over the next 10 years, we're going to have to look at other ideas, because motor fuel tax won't be as stable with EV adoption. But projecting over the next 10 years, these estimates are based on the assumption that we're going to sell 12.8 million gallons of fuel, of gas, within Urbana, which that's a conservative estimate. We've had some decline, but this is lower than our five-year average by about 15%. And then just noting that the option one projection was included in the most recent Capital Improvement Plan. So jumping back over, the blue box, which is what is in the current Capital Improvement Plan, would inject an additional $640,000 per year. Option two is going from the 5 cents to 10 cents, but including an inflationary factor year over year, which ups us to just under $800,000 per year. Option three would be going to the 12 cents per gallon, which is the top end of our market, with no inflationary adjustment at that point. That gets us to about $900,000 per year addition. And option four would be going to the 12 cents per gallon and also introducing an inflationary factor, which would bring in an additional $1.08 million per year into our local motor fuel tax fund. The staff recommendation is to pursue the high option, option four, for the, add $1 million, and at the 12 cents per gallon with the inflationary adjustment. We feel that this will get us to a point where we're making equal or greater improvements than what we could purchase within 2015, which was when our last adjustment was. We feel this is a comparable rate to benchmarking communities, and really, we believe this is an interim solution to take action on quickly to slow the decline of the overall roadway network. This alone will not stop the decline, but it'll be a step in that direction. And looking at this in comparison to kind of our asset management summary from the CIP, this accounts for about, this increase would account for about 5% of the $21.7 million infrastructure gap that we projected within our asset management summary. infrastructure gap that we projected within our asset management summary. The big thing that people want to take away from this is, you know, what is the impact on users of doing something like this? You know, the average user drives a little over 12,000 miles per year in Illinois at about 20.7 miles per gallon on average, which yields 589 gallons of gas per driver per year. So with the seven cent addition to this local motor fuel tax, that would be an impact of about a little over $40 per year to individual drivers or $344 a month per driver. Looking at revenue evaluation, this is something I know there was an exercise you guys did with finance in the past, kind of looking at different revenue generation streams. Looking at this as a revenue generation stream, in terms of fairness, it is a regressive tax which requires a larger share of income for low-income individuals. It does, however, allow us to capture revenue from nonresidents that contribute to the wear and tear of our roads. Impacts on behavior, due to the higher rate increase, there may be an impact on behavior, but in discussions with other benchmarking communities, it's likely that they're going to be pursuing similar increases in the near future for their infrastructure needs as well. And then in terms of cost of administration, it's very low. This is the top end in terms of that because we're already collecting the tax, so it's simply implementing it and rolling that out. In terms of schedule, tonight, we're having this council discussion to discuss with you guys, get some feedback, and at least initiate the conversation. Between now and September 16th, you know, we would accept any feedback from council or questions or concerns that we would propose bringing a local motor fuel tax ordinance review for the committee of the whole on September 16th. If passed forward to the city council meeting on September 23rd, we'd be looking for a review or approval on September 23rd, 2024. And if approved, staff would begin coordination and implementation so that changes can go into effect January 1, 2025. I welcome any questions, and I can fly around if you may go to other pages.
James?
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like you to go back to the page. Thank you for the presentation. If you go back to the page where you compare us against other
This one?
...their communities. Yeah. And so do we, do we, so we last adjusted in 2015, so this is a 10-year essential, essentially adjustment. Do we anticipate that our neighbors in Champaign and Savoy are considering this as well?
I mean, I can just speak from my opinion. Yes, I think they are. They're suffering, their network is in a constant state of decline as well. I think some of this has to do with, you know, what is a priority at the time for the individuals. Savoy, I had discussions with them, they just implemented in 2021, so shortly after I arrived here, and they had asked about where we were at and where we were going, and I indicated that we would probably be going up in the near future. So if they were going to implement, it would, I would advise going higher if anything. And I think it was a matter of just getting over the hurdle of getting something implemented, so they matched us at the time. There wasn't a logic behind their number, per se. And as far as Champaign goes, there's not a logic behind their number either. It's been kind of what is prevalent, but they have insufficient funding shortfalls just like we do. So their networks, based on their modeling moving forward, are slated to likely decline as well.
What does a CPI modifier look like in this circumstance? If we pick one of the ones with a built-in CPI, does it go up tenths of a cent or does it?
Yeah, I mean-
How does it increase over time?
So you could look at the states, for example, over the past few years, you know, they were looking at just their gasoline. They went from, you know, 38 to 38 or 38.7 cents per gallon to 39.2 cents. And then more recently, 2023, I think some of those effects from COVID caught up, and you can see there was a more substantive jump at that point.
So it's automatically going up based on their model?
Correct.
Did you think about the possibility, I understand why you're asking for the amount that you're asking for, but rather than go that whole distance in one fell swoop, did you think about something where it might be staged, since this is a 10-year thing, this review, did you think about staging that in like over a three-year period and then moving to the CPI model so that it's not like one fell swoop?
Yeah, and that's certainly up for debate. My opinion is motor fuel tax revenue is declining already, and it's going to become less and less relevant every year we don't make a bigger jump. So that's why I didn't propose that. It's not outside of consideration, but-
But the impact on individuals, I mean, I look at what we knew in the state that we needed to get to a better minimum wage, but we didn't say, we're going to 15 tomorrow. We did that over a several-year period.
Right.
Because that kind of change takes some adaptation and for people to understand it. So I guess I would encourage considering a model that steps into it over time, over like the first three years or first four years, and gets us to the place where it's moving up based on CPI after that.
Yeah. And I think that that's something you could look at, but I think those jumps would have to be incrementally. You wouldn't do 12, to get the similar value, you wouldn't do 12 cents over three, you wouldn't get to 12 over three years, you'd get to like 15 over three years.
One year, four, one year, four.
Correct. You'd be bigger jumps each year. So it's something you could do, you would just be taking bigger jumps.
That's just something that occurs to me as a way to get there, but have it be moderated as we're, as we're taking that bigger chunk.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Grace, and then Chandra.
Are you suggesting a diesel tax or just gasoline?
I have not now, just for the sake of simplicity. It's not that we couldn't do that, but we're not, you know, the same people that sell gasoline are selling diesel, so it would just be introducing a separate component for that. The idea behind doing a market rate adjustment and doing just gasoline is the idea of just the simplest change for us. We could certainly entertain the idea of doing a diesel, but that's something new for the sellers of this, that they would then have to, they potentially have to roll something up on their side. I don't know how much of a jump is that is on our side to do that, but probably not as grand of a lift, but-
Because I am curious in going on the lower end of gasoline, like say the 10 rather than 12, and does a diesel fee kind of make up that difference? Because, yeah, I hear you, that it'd be a new system to implement, but also that's also the uncaptured revenue. Any big diesel trucks, they're the main ones ripping up our road, probably worse than other vehicles, aren't supporting that tax if they're getting diesel, right?
Yeah.
So I would be curious if it would be possible to have kind of an estimate on what that would look like.
We can look into it.
Thank you.
That was also my question too, to look into the diesel tax as well. So if we can hear more about that as well, thank you.
James?
You may not know this, but somebody else might. Do we, do we have gas stations that serve trucks in Urbana? Semis? I don't know that we have a, that kind of-
I don't know that we have like a truck stop type station.
Diesel at one of, but I'm not aware, we don't have a-
Yeah, I mean, like the FS maybe on University would be the one that would stand out to me.
So it'd be important to know how much diesel is sold
Correct.
In Urbana to know how that differential, I think it, I think it should be considered that we have a rate on that that mitigates this, but I'm afraid it's not going to be a huge number compared to the regular gas purchases.
Right. That is a challenge, you know, if you don't have amenities for those type of vehicles to come in, convenient, right off the interstate, things like that, it could be less impactful. I mean, you could introduce it, but it may be less impactful just due to the volume that's sold.
And I assume that like E85 or E15 or whatever, is that treated the same as-
I think that's just taxed with gasoline as far as I know, but I'd have to confirm that.
They don't get an ethanol discount on the taxes?
Not that I'm aware of, but yeah.
Thank you.
Chandra?
Could you go back to the four options? Could you maybe explain again the CPIU? So you have the 10 cent per gallon, looking at options two and four, and then you said something about it automatically increases. What does, what does that look like? How does that work?
So the Consumer Price Index is something that many people use, that it is adjusted based on a number of different factors for just what consumer, what's happening to consumers' prices, what are the impacts on people, things like that. And it's been something that a lot of people lean on year over year that is managed, I can't remember what state agency does that, Elizabeth probably knows.
Elizabeth knows.
It's federal, it's the Bureau of Labor Statistics.
There you go. So they manage that, and then a lot of people rely on that to make adjustments that are supposed to be incremental over time, but also reflective of the times.
So it would be, so it would be 10 cent maybe one year, and then the next year would, could go to 10.103 or something like that?
Correct. It would have some kind of percentage-based incremental adjustment based on the adjustment in CPIU over the year.
Thank you.
Mary Alice, did you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I wanted to say that I agree with James's thought about stepping it up until we get to an amount that makes sense for our road conditions, but also is tied to the CPI. And my other question is actually not about this, but rather, has there been discussion or what has the discussion been with electric vehicles? As they increase, we are decreasing the amount of gas that we're selling, but we still have the same number of vehicles on the road. So I was wondering if you could speak to that.
Gladly. I like to talk about this one because I've talked at the state level multiple times about the fact that this is a thing that is hard for municipalities to counteract. The state has worked to do some of this, so with some of their adjustments in 2019, 2020, they introduced advanced registration costs for EVs that was supposed to pay into that transportation renewal fund that was introduced then. It does, it's a step, I would say. If you look at average mileage, when I did a little research, the average gas user is paying about $270 per year in motor fuel tax to the state, and the average EV owner's paying about $100 per year for the similar use of roads. So it's definitely not equal, it's a step in the right direction. You know, I think the state and the federal government are going to have to continue to explore other options because this is their primary revenue stream for their roadways as well. They have a little bit more control, I would say, in terms of capturing that via either registrations or introducing other legislation that would change things to either do a wheel tax or do a mileage tax of some sort to try to, you know, pursue equity in that, in that standard as to what the wear and tear is. But it's a hard one for us to capture at the local level. You know, our hope would be that the state and federal level would start to capture that, and we would get, you know, appropriated amount of that as well.
And of course, that is going to be contingent upon what our population numbers are if the state is collecting that money.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Grace, did you have another question?
Yeah, just a piece of discussion here. And while I absolutely understand that these are large capital needs that are going to be continuous as long as we have roads and capital assets, right? Also just wanted to share some frustration as I'm remembering some of the budget conversations and being told that we didn't anticipate tax increases and that the budget was fine while we're having budget items for new buildings and entirely new programs for police and fire. And it's just coming in my mind, remembering some of those conversations and how this plays in here now with a very realistic, tangible need, and that we are putting the tax burden on the residents. I understand this is somewhat outside of that regardless of other budget planning. This would maybe be a need anyway. But yeah, just some frustration and I guess some sadness for residents when budget season's around and it's all, everything's fine, and then coming back around and actually, we do need to increase taxes because we have major issues with capital assets. So no response needed from anyone unless they choose to, but just sharing some thoughts there.
Well, I would respond briefly to that. Number one, this was discussed previously. It was part of the council goals discussion, a specific, it was brought up during the whole council goals. This is a tax that is specifically geared to infrastructure maintenance as opposed to general fund. And this is, this has been discussed for the past year. So it's not, it's not a new, not a new topic. Chris, did you have anything to add?
Quick question. Thanks for the breakdown, Tim. When you say construction costs are inflated, are increased by 50%, is that just road construction or is that all construction?
I would tell you in general, it's all construction. We've seen increased costs in about anything we've done. The facilities projects are another example of something that's non-road construction that's been seeing, you know, immense cost increase. You know, I think Mary Alice may have asked me, I think, a year after I got here and had to come back for a bunch of budget amendments, that was fun, but, you know, about this, and the conversation at this time was, I advise that we continue doing projects and don't stop because I don't think this is going to stop anytime soon. And we're three years later, and it's continued to rise now. The next five years, maybe it stabilizes some, but I don't think we're going to go back down.
So that includes the fire station construction too? Okay, thank you.
Jay?
Thank you. Tim, thank you for this information. I think it's really important. I do agree with Grace that the way the conversation around tax increases was framed during the budget would suggest that there weren't, wouldn't be tax increases for this fiscal year. That's not to say that I don't think this is appropriate. I think this is much needed. I like the CPIU piece personally, just in terms of feedback. I think that makes sense to me, that so we don't wait another 10 years before we look at an increase. I think having the information about the kind of step-based approach makes sense, but we also know how much we're underinvesting in our infrastructure now, and that ability to utilize these funds is likely to decrease. So, you know, having more information is always useful. I don't feel prepared at this point to say that I have a strong preference on it. It makes me nervous because it is a regressive tax, how it's going to impact lower-income individuals in our community, but we have to do something. So this is, this is really helpful, and like I said, I think, if nothing else, concrete, I like the CPIU piece. I think that's important.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you.
Okay. We'll share this online as well so that people have access to it.
Okay, the last item on the agenda are two appointments. One is to the Urbana Free Library Board, and that is to fill out a term that will end, vacancy in a term ending June 30th, 2025. It's for Julia Pollak. She's been a resident of Urbana for over 12 years. She began as an undergraduate page in the Central Circulation Department at the U of I's main library, where she worked for a couple of years from September 2006 to 2008. And it was during that time she developed a strong foundation in library operations and customer service. She holds a master's in library and information sciences from the U of I. In her application, she stated, "I love the Urbana Free Library and libraries of all kinds. I went to library school here at the University of Illinois, worked for three years at Bronx Community College in New York as a reference and instruction librarian. Libraries and library logistics have always been close to my heart. I chose library school because I was fascinated by the restructuring of the university library system. I find information, construction, and history, hold the blueprints to answer questions about knowledge production and access to information. My family regularly goes to UFL. My four-year-old will complain about leaving the house, but jump at the chance to ride our bike to the library to pick out a new stack of princess books. I've had the pleasure of running a recent art and science event at U of L, and I look forward to the opportunity to serve on the library board, to help our community and our library community grow and thrive." And then we have an appointment for the Urbana Arts and Culture Commission for a term in- And then we have an appointment for the Urbana Arts and Culture Commission for a term ending June 30th, 2027. This is for Hannah Darcy. Hannah Darcy's been a resident of Urbana for over seven years and specializes in developing and managing strong relationships with student, post-doc, and faculty inventors, particularly within the physical sciences. Her expertise includes civil, mechanical, nuclear, electrical, and computer engineering as well as bioengineering and biomedical imaging. Darcy's experience includes serving as treasurer on a committee at East Tennessee State University where she was responsible for reviewing small grants. In her current role at the U of I, she makes significant decisions regarding the university's investments, with each decision to patent an invention potentially costing the university $35,000 or more. In her application, she stated, "I'm applying to this commission to get more involved in the running of our city. I want to do my part to support initiatives and enrich people's lives and beautify the city. I bring my experience with leading a committee as treasurer in reviewing small grants at East Tennessee State University. I make larger decisions about the University of Illinois investments through my current job, where each decision to patent an investment may cost the university $35,000 or more. My interest in this specific commission comes from my love of the arts, which though not a big role in my day job, is an important part of my life. As a teenager, I was involved in my city's youth Shakespeare Company. I've been doing 2D art as a hobby for over 20 years. I also dabble in creative writing and am part of the Champaign-Urbana Quote Nanoraimo", I don't know if I, is that how you say that? Which is the National Novel Writing Month community. And for that, and again, that's for a term ending June 30th, 2025. I mean, we'd entertain a motion.
Move approval of the two aforementioned nominations to boards and commissions?
Second? Seconded by Jay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And with no further business before the council, this meeting is adjourned.